I now call the regular city council meeting for our average city council to honor January 7th, 2025, 5:30 PM. Kathy, please give me a roll call.
Yes ma'am. Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Bruce Or.
Here.
Councilman Bruce Or.
Here.
Councilwoman Luton.
Here.
Councilman Lord.
Here.
Mayor and forum.
Come in a forum present. We will ask everyone to stand for a prayer in the pledge. Councilwoman Bruce Or, would you like to lead us in the prayer?
Oh sure. And yes, and our forum. Our forum. For. Oh, without name, without being called, that I will be there. Under the conditions you have. You get the system that I have to bring. You get the stop trespasses. And we can hear those trespasses. Yes, this is. And it is sound with your situation. Let the legal profession be able.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And I would like to call on Mr. Richard Darby, candidate for police officer, to lead us in the pledge. Mr. Darby?
A pledge of allegiance. To the flag. The United States of America. To the government of this nation under God. In its soul. With nothing but justice and love.
That being said, I will open the floor for public comments, but first, general housekeeping council. Remember, your microphones are on. We are live streaming in the front, so we will ask if you want to make a public comment, that you come up to the front, state your name for the record, and remember that you are on camera. Uh, we do ask that you limit comments on agenda items to three minutes and presentations to seven. That's just keep the meeting rolling. And once your item of agenda is taken, your agenda item is taken up consideration, you're free to leave. You don't have to stay. We just ask that you do so quietly to not disturb the meeting. Uh, you are welcome to stay, and we invite you to stay always. With that being said, thank you all for being here. I'll now open the floor for public comments. Are there any public comments on any agenda items prior to start of the meeting? Hearing that, we'll move on to personnel. We have one item, and the items of personnel. Item number one, to approve recommendation to appoint police officer. Police Department Personnel Chief Mike, where do you have the floor?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, I have Mr. Richard Darby, 19 years of age. Would like to go through the police department. He's fit all the qualifications of, of the date, and I am recommending Bama.
I do move.
Second. Hey, I have a motion and a second to, uh, to take the chief's recommendation, as well as the mayor's, to appoint Richard Darby as a police officer for Abbeville Police Department. Um, Mr. Darby, I just have a couple of comments. Um, it's fine saying you went to high school in Karen Crow and live in Youngsville, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And my only concern on that application was a short stay at both your jobs before this, but I know that part of it is that you always wanted to be a police officer, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So you are aware that you have a commitment in your contract, and you're prepared to honor that, right? Okay. And why you want to be a police officer so badly?
Um, I've always enjoyed helping people, helping the community. And I feel like that would be the best way for me to do that.
That's all I have. Counsel?
Youngs Hill has a new police chief, right?
Uh, I'm not too aware of the Youngs Hill Police.
There is. I don't know if they swarm in yet, but they did. They did have a different one win.
Yes. I just wondered, um, yeah, I know it's a beautiful town, and everybody wants to move here, but, you know, I'm not sure maybe you might have applied with the new police chief.
Oh, yes.
I just, I just have one, um, uh, one thing to ask of you is that, um, throughout the city, and I'm going to speak on behalf of my district, that if you're ever called on a call out in my district, I always tell, uh, police officers who we hire. It, it depends on your attitude when you approach a situation, whether it'll stay calm or escalate. And I'm just asking you to do your job with dignity and respect and compassion to other people. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And you go by Richie, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Presentations. Item number one, the Mayan Reach Group to discuss the upcoming MLK Day celebration. If someone is tiring, then Councilwoman Bruce Or is going to hit this one, I think.
Okay, uh, first of all, January 11th at 2025, uh, January 11th, 2025, it's the MLK banquet, uh, being held at Madeline Square.
Please.
Madeline Place, too. Yes. Okay. Thanks for the correction.
You're right.
And on January 20th, 2025, we will have the downtown march that will then lead to the square where we'll have free, uh, food, uh, free drinks, uh, water, solar, punch, that sort of thing. So we're asking everybody to come out and, um, enjoy and celebrate. And that begins at?
9:30.
9:30.
The stump service is at 9:00 AM. I have it behind you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. I went straight to the march.
Yeah. The march is at 9:30.
And it says join our streets, but it's I do join. I did, I do joiner. Um, 9 o'clock, the stump service with the lineup, you're right, Councilwoman, the lineup is at 9:30 at Abbeville Electric, and the walk will go down, um, State Street and come up Confort.
There's a, there's a map there.
Okay. So it is at 9:30.
The march.
9:30 lineup for the walk. Yes.
Yes. And we're asking if you can to please come out, um, and celebrate this day. And I encourage everybody, uh, what I did this past weekend was, uh, anytime I can learn and educate myself on something, and there's always something out there to learn, I, uh, sat and watched, um, uh, interviews from, uh, 1986 with Martin Luther King, uh, watched one, um, where he talked about Congress and Senate. Really, really interesting. So there's more to Martin Luther King than meet the eye. It's not just, uh, the, I have a dream. Um, through listening, you, he, he saw, he, I would imagine in my mind that he saw some things that, uh, we see today, that's happening today. So, um, if you can, just join us and come and have a good time. And, uh, we thank the Vermillion Reach Group for really putting in every effort with this on Martin Luther King Day. Thank you.
That ceremony was really nice last year. Uh, see, everybody say a few prayers that it won't be quite as cold this year.
How long?
But I imagine it was a wonderful day, and yes, I too encourage everyone.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, not that cold. Good feeling. So it was my biggest last year. Okay, that being said, any other questions or comments on that presentation?
Mayor, I'm doing some research to find out the exact date that we did the first march of, it, it's hard to find because nobody kept a history of it. But, uh, and some people who may have known our first march, well, they're no longer with us. But, uh, when we marched to the stump, we, uh, went back to the old Herod Gym, which is no longer there. And I, my estimation is 33 years ago. But if anybody has any knowledge of exactly when we started the march, the stump speech, please let us know so we can keep record of it. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. Moving on. Minutes for bill. Item number one, to approve amendments for the committee meetings held on November 5th in 2024, December 3rd, 2024, and regular city council meetings held on November 5th, 2024, November 19th, 2024, and December 3rd, 2024. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Appreciation of Kathy who puts these excellent minutes together.
Takes up a lot of time, and she, she takes a lot of pride in it. Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to ratify bills paid in the month of December 2024.
Move.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Item number one, to adopt a resolution pertaining to the downtown traffic signage plan.
Move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm, I'm going to run through it real quick, but, um, it's nothing new. You guys actually adopted most of this when we went forward with the bid plans. But what we've been doing over the last three months, I guess, is walking the route and making sure that the signage is all up to date and any changes that needed to be made. And so what we have is a, a resolution that we worked on with Sellers and Associates, as well as Bort and I. And it basically just, uh, says that we want to limit the speed on North State Street from the bypass all the way to Lafayette to 25 miles per hour. One thing that I want to open up to discussion as part of this agenda item is should we reduce that speed to 15 miles an hour within, uh, the immediate blocks around the square in the courthouse? Because I don't know if you've driven it, but I don't think anybody should be going 25 miles an hour even in that area. So it would be a suggestion. I want some comments from the chief on it. But, uh, to reduce the speed limit on North State Street for the stretch that we take it over and redone from right now, it's 30, I think it's 45, and then it drops to 35. Do the whole route 25, and then drop it to 15 immediately in the two-block radius of downtown. Um, and then all of the other things you see and have experienced over the last few months, which is the merger one way into the single southbound lane, um, all of the always stops replacing the streetlights. Uh, Sellers and Associates helped put together a map, which we will attach to the resolution and put it on file. Uh, this is not a process that we've done in the past, but now that we've taken these streets and made them local, Bort and I reviewed all the state laws, and, and it was Bort's recommendation that we go ahead and adopt the resolution with all these uh, speed limit changes and directional changes. Do you have any specific questions about the route or the plan?
Uh, implementation. Uh, I think the public is ready. Uh, the changes have been talked about for many months.
Yes.
And, uh, sooner we can get those changes put in place, it'll be better for everyone. And the public can't adapt that until we get them in place.
Um, Todd, do we have an update from the contractor when they plan to come in, do the punch list and the final signage?
I think as soon as they get this approved plan, which we're sending it to tomorrow.
Okay.
They're going to all of the signs and, and give us the final pricing all of a sudden.
And some of these signs are already there. Some are changing out existing signs, and some are new signage. So that's kind of, they were doing an audit of what was in the job versus what's actually needed on the ground. So that's kind of the checks and balances. And they'll do the punch list and finish the striping and everything at that time when they do that. Okay. Before we take action or vote, I do want to hear discussion about, do we want to leave it 25 miles per hour throughout the route, or do we want to reduce it down to 15? And where is that? Go ahead. Yes.
What is the speed limit on North St. Charles now?
Right now, it's 45 until you get to like maybe Edwards, and then it drops.
From 45 to 25 that fast?
Yes.
It's kind of.
No, the drop from the, when you come off, when you come off of the bypass.
Getting down. I'll get north.
Oh, that's North St. Charles.
Yes. What did I say?
You said State Street, right?
North St. Charles.
North St. Charles. It is 35 miles an hour until you get, I think, which right out to Edwards, which is on that curve, and then it goes up to 45. But what happens is people gas on it from that stop sign, and they, they speeding, right?
Change that, too.
Well, that's what, so what we're, what I'm recommending is 25 miles an hour from when you come off the bypass all the way till you get to Lafayette Street. With the exception of we might drop it to 15 in this level one-block radius close to courthouse and city hall. And then on the outside, same thing. It would be 15 miles an hour on St. Charles, and then only 25 till they get to the bypass. Don't accelerate to 45. Leave it 25 all the way to the bypass. That's the, that's the, that's what's up the discussion.
And, and mayor, I'd like to get the opinion of Councilwoman Hardy, who is a traffic officer and chief of police, because if it's not enforceable, we don't need to waste our time making that.
Yeah.
You'll be right on that.
I think you're right about being 15 downtown, because then you can't hardly drive the lanes the way they are faster than 15.
I left last night with, with no traffic, and even, even, you know, 10 to 12 miles an hour was really in that range. It should be traffic.
15 downtown, uh, all downtown, probably St. Victor.
Lafayette is kind of what I was thinking. And then I was thinking from Main Street, which is right there when you cross the threshold.
Yes.
And then Charity, basically. On Charity, that's still a state highway after one block, so you don't mess with Charity. It would just be 15 from Main Street to Charity, and 15 from Lafayette to St. Victor. And north of St. Victor would be 25 all the way to the bypass.
How you feel, Tony?
I'm good with that.
It would keep traffic slower, sure.
Right.
Because like you said, uh, I see a lot of them leave from Vermillion. When there was a red light there, it assumed to be a green light that for a red.
Right.
So it's.
And chief, you feel your officers would be able to enforce that?
Yes. Yes, they, they would be busy for a little while, but yes.
Yeah, I think you give them a week's worth of warnings and then a week's worth of tickets, and that ought to do it.
Off them or in them.
You know, I know, and, and then I'm going to say, if somebody calls here mad that they got a ticket, the conversation with that person needs to be quit speeding.
Trying to make it safe for free use.
That's right. That's right. Because laws without enforcement, there's no point. So what, do you want to, uh, make the change to do go 50 miles per hour within the area we discussed?
Yeah, I'm going to move to make that.
Change. Okay. So Bort, you got that, because you're going to be the one changing the resolution?
She has it right there.
Okay.
Mark it for.
Yeah. So we'll just reduce the speed to 15, and I'll, I'll remember where it is.
You know, you've seen the people driving much faster than downtown.
No, really, you can't get to that speed, but, but just, you know, at first, we were going to just say 25 throughout. But then I'm like, well, if somebody goes 25 right there, we really should stop them and give them a ticket, because it's very dangerous, right? So I mean, uh, I think realistically 15 mile, I'd suggest a 10, but the state highway manual doesn't really give you concessions to go to drop.
You have stop signs. I mean, you're trying to drive, you know.
But they do. They, they leave that stop sign, and they peel out, and they go and try to go as fast as they can till they get to the next one. All day long, I hear.
That's on my, yeah, on my. We have Luther King, that's everywhere.
No, we need, we need speed enforcement throughout the city.
Yeah, throughout the city.
What about signage again?
So the signage is all in, in the plan. There's a map. Uh, that's what Christian has up. Um, it's taken us a while to do an audit of what's there, what's temporary signs that need to be permanent, what's signs that might need to be transitioned out. So all of the signage is there. The signage will be like it is laid out right now, with the exception of there is a yield sign right now when you come off of Washington, approaching the square. Yield sign. Well, that's going to be a stop sign instead in this plan, because it's actually striped as a stop bar. So that sign will have to be changed. Everywhere else where you see temporary stop signs, that's going to be permanent stop signs. It's basically laid out and signed the way it needs to be, with the exception of that one intersection, I believe. And there's added signage for the bike, you know, the bike signage that needs to be there. There's some yield pedestrian signage that was missing that we added to it. So
Pretty tight.
Now that we have all the signs laid out and numbered, they're going to audit it. They're going to come back with a, they're going to audit the signs and go out and install them. So that's, that's kind of where we are. So, um, I can give you an updated count. I'm sure we'll have the updated count at the next meeting, because there'll be a, you know, there'll be a change order taking some signs off, adding some. Okay. Any other questions or comments before we move forward?
Well, let me just go on the record thanking the expertise of Councilwoman Toni Hardy. And chief, thank you for your input, because I will go back. Speed limit signs are no good if there's no enforcement. So thank you both.
And, and one thing that was not in the original plan that we're adopting now, just don't want anybody to say they didn't know, is y'all all know we did this demonstration on State Street from, uh, Peace to Lafayette, one-way outbound. Mm-hmm. That we put it in as a permanent change here. So I want, I feel like it's important that I say that to y'all. In this additional signage, that's permanent. We had said we wouldn't change it permanently till December, after December 31st, so that we could get feedback.
Say that.
I, so this, this temporary installation we did from, uh, the Sheriff's Annex to Lafayette, where we closed it all, one lane and angle parking, we had said we wouldn't make the change permanent till after December 31st. I personally have gotten no complaints about it. Actually, the sheriff's office compliments us all the time on it. Um, if y'all don't have any objections to that, then I.
Stop signs and we say we're tired.
No, we're, 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 which Todd, and we'll probably do that with our team. That, that segment wasn't in this original job, because it wasn't planned. So our team will probably do the permanent signage change, but we'll get together after that and let you guys know. But no, we would go with permanent signage like we are with the rest of the project. That, it was just like that in case we had to change it. It's been money once, not twice. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Now, that's been a long process. I'm ready to wrap it up as much as anybody.
Move.
Please. All right. Item number two, to accept the recommendation from the December 3rd, 2024 ordinance committee to adopt an ordinance that will set forth reasons the governing authority has determined to take action to lease the property located at 106 J.C. Borhoff Road, Abbeville, Louisiana, fixing the minimum price in term of lease. Counsel, this is the, uh, Old Lions Club building over by the airport. Uh, as you know, I think we talked about it in this, this previous meeting. We had, the lease was, was, uh, there was, there was a lot of violations of lease. The club's not active anymore. We were maintaining it. There was water leaks, everything else. So we have now gone through the process of, uh, reclaiming the property. We have had inquiries about, uh, businesses and otherwise wanting to utilize that property. So this is the next step. We, we, uh, Bort, I'm going to let you speak to it from a legal standpoint, but we need to say that we're not using it for our day-to-day operations and that we're going to put it out for lease, and we've gotten appraisal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because appraisal, the, the market value came back at 750 a month. So our notice will say request bids with that minimum price.
And so we'll list it one time, and then the original, receive any bids for anybody interested in leasing it, open those bids, and evaluate, and we'll move forward with leasing out the property.
Once we have a bid, we come back to the council. Hopefully, thanks to keep the lease. I think great.
And the lease does say a minimum of five years and a maximum of 10, because by law, we can't lease anything for longer than 10 years.
Right. Your barbecue pit, like that.
It is. I don't, I don't intend to let anybody do anything with the barbecue pits, right? Come to us before they could do anything with that. But, uh, yeah, they're, they're nice, large barbecue pits. Okay. I think I have a motion in a second. Did I get them? Do I have a motion in a second? Motion by Councilman Hardy, second by Councilmember Bruce Or. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, to approve the placement of two six-inch suction lift pumps at Waterloo Lift Station at an approximate $12,000 towards some labor.
Move. Second.
Motion in a second. Chris, you want to speak briefly on this?
Sure. Uh, pumps have been in the ground for God knows how long. The, uh, impeller's on the inside are worn, and it's also has worn the housings on the inside, so there's no rebuilding.
And counsel, that's right in back of the Steen's sort of plan.
And it's incredibly critical, because it's the one that pumps all the sewer from the west side over.
Right.
So it handles everything.
It's a, it's about a 35-foot deep pit, too. So it's going to be a job to get them out and put new ones in. Uh, hopefully, they fit on the, uh, on the, the feet that are on the bottom hole in the pumps. Hopefully, everything lines up. Um, $25,000 should get the job done. Unless we have some major trouble. Um, they don't stay primed right now because of all the wear. Um, so almost every day we have to prime them. And, you know, with rain events, that could cause a real big problem. So, but the guys are there every day priming them, um, cleaning them out, doing whatever they have to do to baby them till, till we can get it fixed. Uh, the pump's about four to six weeks out.
And Chris, it's the impellers that wear down?
Yeah, impellers wear down, and then the, uh, they sew all that the housings wear on the inside. So it's, it's no, uh, I mean, if I could rebuild them, I would, but it's no rebuilding. Everything's out of cops. Sir.
Soon as they come in, you'll, is when you're planning.
Yeah, so I'm going to order them tomorrow, and then I'll line up the, the guy that's going to, um, install them is different from we get, from who we get the pump from, and we'll try to set that up so he can be there as soon as I get the pump, you know?
So it's 35 feet down the, uh?
The hole, yes. 30, 35 feet, the actual hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, that the pumps sit down on. Those, those wells fill up. We have level switches that kick them on and, and off when it's, when the levels are, are different, you know, low level, high level. So.
Yeah, automatic.
Yeah, yeah. On, on, uh, they'll, these on radars, uh, trans, transmitters that, that kick those switches on and off. So we'll have to do it quick. We can only do one at a time, because North Henry takes in so much sewer. We have to shut North Henry down, hurry up and change this one, then allow everything to start working again, and then the next day, probably do the other one. It's not a job that we can do in one day. So, yeah.
35 feet. C R A P.
That's what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Long time.
Miss. Okay. So I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, to consider granting a variance from the mobile home ordinance for Antonio Gilbert to move a 1997 16-by-80 mobile home from 509 South Bailey to 3149th Street, subject to meeting all requirements.
Okay.
Want to make a motion? You want to just talk?
Yeah, I move.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion. As I can go ahead, Councilwoman Bruce Or, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Uh, Antonio is not here, correct?
No, he's not.
Okay. Do you have the paperwork that he got online and, um?
Um, no, I get, we didn't.
Okay, okay, we have. Okay, so I, tonight I'm asking the, uh, this property where his mobile home is, it was purchased, it was bought. So he had to, the property was sold where his mobile home is. So, uh, he, it has to be moved. And so that is why I'm here with the, with the, uh, asking the council and the mayor to consider this variance for him, because the person who purchased the property is also ready to, um, take care of things on the property. So I'm asking you all to support this.
Yeah, and he, he did submit the IBTS certificate, uh, for the manufactured home. Um, so we do have that certificate verified. Kim's fit in the, kind of in the, in that with him. He's taking a look at the property, right, Kim?
Yeah.
Because the concern was.
Oh, I didn't say you can't.
The variance is because our, our ordinance says a certain age of a mobile home is 15 years, and this one's quite a.
This one's actually a 96 model, according to the research that IBTS did. Um, and the, the only, the, the big question we have was, was, was the trailer, we're to rate it for the correct window.
That's exactly right.
They certified that it was, and other than that, the variance is only for the year.
Yeah.
You know, the year requirement in your ordinance.
Okay, it's moving from one lot in Councilwoman Bruce Or's district to another. And I would like to do that for him.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
So if you grant the variance now, he'll have some more permits to get in additional work, but you want to make sure he can get the variance before he does.
Yeah, that's right. He'll come and speak to Sarah. He knows that he have to.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? variance granted.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome. Item number five, to authorize the mayor to execute the audit engagement letter with Dornell Sykes and Frederick relative to the audit for the fiscal, the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2024.
I move.
A motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
That, that's routine, right?
This is annually, we have to adopt this. They do our audit, um, and so they will, they gave us a quote to do the audit. It's not to exceed 57,000 with non-atest services extra. Um, and that is what this is for. They have been doing the audit for as long as I've been on council, which is not that long. So they have submitted another, uh, another agreement, but I, I'll need a little more time to look at it in detail before I recommend the adoption of that one. So this is just for the auditing services and non-atest services. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, to approve change order number six relative to Abbeville's downtown street improvement project.
Mm-hmm.
Motion and second, council. Uh, I know Councilwoman Bruce Or asked about this, and I didn't have the information on what it was until late today, Todd. I hope that your team does a better job of that getting it to us earlier next time. But this one is in the amount of $3,956 for, um, the raised pavement markers along the job of the downtown street project. So that is, that's what this, the dollar amount is, 3,956, and it's for 430, uh, raised pave, pavement markers. That's the reflective markers? Yeah, the, the centerline reflection.
And Todd, would this have been on the punch list, or this is?
We didn't have a pay item in the contract. They've installed a portion of them and have some to install.
Okay.
This is just adding a pay item to the contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, to approve payment of partial payment estimate number eight relative to the Abbeville Downtown Street Improvement Project. Um, counsel, this one is for a total of $23,680.60 cents. It's mostly, it's, it has the pavement markers. It has a little bit of pavement markers. Uh, the change order is in here, but I think, I guess that's all kind of added and subtracted out. Uh, and then the rest of it is for striving. So we'll let Todd answer any questions, and I'll entertain a motion. Kind of added and subtracted out. Uh, and then the rest of it is for striping. So we'll let Todd answer any questions and I'll entertain a motion to. Motion in a second. Thank you. Uh, it's mostly for pavement, striping, it looks like, right?
Striping, uh, the striping that has been performed to date is to pay the contractor for that.
Already performed.
And it's a total due this estimate twenty three thousand six hundred eighty six. See, that's part of the original bid.
And they'll complete the balance after the concrete pavement repairs are done on on South State Street.
So State Street, I'm sorry, yeah, North State, when you're coming in from the bypass. Where the barrels are right now. That's not the end of the job, but there are some cracks in that concrete that originally in the job. We wanna patch and repair any concretes that make that are big issues, right? So when they come back, they're gonna fix Chris and Chris and Kelly and so it's those that have been kind of identifying which which. Cracks they need to repair now. Um, they will fix those cracks. And then we will, they will come in and finish the striping, put the delineators in and all of that work, and that is gonna be the conclusion of the project. And the signage will all be done at that time. So the project actually extends northbound to Graceland and Oak, is it Oak? Or or South Hollingsworth? I don't remember what, what's the opposite of Graceland? Yeah, so that's where the project's actually gonna start and stop. But right now, they didn't do any of the work on the concrete. They just did the asphalt work. So there's a little bit of work left to do along the concrete portion of the route. Any other questions or comments?
Great news, the orange cones will not live there forever.
And to stop and pick up a stop sign in the middle of the wind this weekend because it did not. I was in my dress and my heels. Out there picking up a stop sign, so I'm ready for the permanent signage to be in there. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all. Motion carries. That's it for items of new business, once the whole business will move on to engineers. Todd or Jean, I'll yell out for y'all first. It's the Jean. Good to see you here.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. I'm gonna do a thirty minute presentation. Anything for our engineers team? So, uh, do you know if the sewer contractor is back on the job? I think his schedule showed he'd be back today.
Schedule to be here tomorrow. His electrician will be finalizing the electrical work at the pump station next to the B C.
Okay, so tomorrow we should expect him back on the job. Just make make pass.
And that should complete the work on that pump station once he's done.
Um, anything else? None? Okay. We're going on attorneys for attorney singular. I don't want four. Collier, start it, Chris.
Uh, all parks are closed for the week due to the weather. I've shut water off at all the parks that I could. Uh, but um, tactlessly, uh, a leak has occurred. Went from the freeze and it said between Luket and Delcum Field. So Larry went over there, saw about that, no idea where that water line came from. So they they capped it on both ends and seemed like we have water where it needs to be. So it might have just been a line from from years ago that.
Seventy five year old parks.
Yeah, right. So we we took care of that. We left the hole open to make sure it's not still leaking, but um, so the the all the parks are closed. Uh, we're gonna reopen again on Saturday, is what I think I text you. Yeah, so it should reopen on Saturday. The weather should be better. People can get out and play and walk and stuff like that. And fish, yeah. Um, I tried to get the waters back on by that time. Uh, let's see what else. Um, in the sewer department, uh, we're fixing to call a guy to run camera on a few issues that we're we're having in in different areas. We got it on a list. When we get him, we usually do two or three spots at one time. Uh, I have another lift station. I'm gonna come to you with a with another pump, not nearly as expensive as this job, but it's another pump. I've been kind of holding off um, so to get us into January for a new budget. We went to a, uh, ma'am.
Say before before you bring him in, I wanna go look at um, South Jefferson, I can.
We went to a a new customer complaint system, started uh, started yesterday. The guys love it. Um, all of a sudden, I'm issuing out the work and things aren't getting left behind. Um, and it's gonna eliminate calls that I've called four times and nobody's came or we came thirty days ago. So we're just trying to get a better handle of it to make it better for the citizens, make it better for the council. You don't get as many phone calls. All the employees love it so far. Um, no complaints about it. So we're we're going to that. I think I got one that Rachel even entered, uh, and it did work, Rachel. You I I did get it. Uh, I thought they had fixed it today. I told Jeremy to tell you if I didn't talk to you, they had fixed it, but they picked up two trees that were down instead. So that's what they did. Also, speaking of trees, the new dump truck that y'all graciously uh, got for us a year ago has finally came in. The street bridge has their new dump truck. Um, so we'll maybe be able to do a little bit more. Uh, the other dump truck, I think is about a week to two weeks away.
And that's for the sewer plant.
Sewer plant, right.
And you had a test period on that new system, right?
Yes, sir. I had about a three or four week. Um, I had some guys out on vacation and um, I had to figure out what what the crew was doing. So the only way I could do that was through that system. Uh, we had a few that called in that we put them in. Uh, and uh, it really, really worked out, you know? So I think it's gonna be better for everybody involved.
As as y'all know, we're building a a G I S, which we will be giving a demonstration at some point in the near future. Um, where we're putting in all of our infrastructure stuff into it. And we kinda started this with the electrical system first because we are trying to map out the electrical system and G I S. And it was working really well as far as when somebody would call in an issue, they would put it into the portal. It shows up on the map, the the you can look at the map, you can see where the complaint is, you can, not not everyone can. Public Works can see what the complaint is, see when it was called in, who put it in, who called. Um, and and the goal is to have all of the infrastructure, all of our calls and complaints go through that same system. The only re- the only reason there's two forms right now is because uh, we are moving to the new accounting system, which will have an integrated G I S. And before we did too much work building a custom G I S, we wanna give it this first quarter. We're just working in this form state for the other infrastructure. And then when we merge the two systems, there'll be a single form. So you'll probably hear in a quarter, half or six months that we're gonna have a different place for you to go and enter it. That's just more of the integration of everything into one system. So you'll get to see that live and it. And if you guys wanna stop by Public Works or my office at any point and see it, we can show you all that. But at some point, we'll do a demonstration here. Um, when we when we feel we're ready, we'll do a demonstration in a public meeting. But what what the goal of this is, is that at some point, we see all these calls on a map. Chris can see where the teams are. He can see, you know, kind of air all the work that needs to be done in a certain area that's being called in. And it all can be down downloaded really quick, exported to an Excel sheet where you can give us guys a list to go into. And we have accountability for who put it in, when, timestamp, date stamp, so.
So the council has access to put in complaints if you wanna do it yourself. I'm available to do it. Mayor has done one. So, but we still available to help you. Ms. Lynn's available for you to to do that. So we'll get it in. We just want them all in. Even the ones I see, I I'll put them in, uh, like the water leak at Luket today, we put it in. So that I have a record that Larry went and fixed that, you know?
And and also so that two things, one, at some point in the future, it would be a front facing portal where customers could put in their complaints and track their complaints. Now, that's still a ways out, right? But at some point, they'd be able to put it in and see how many days that complaint's been waiting and what the holdup is, and there would be some updates and. But but the end game is to have a workflow created that would would give, would communicate with the customer, right? That's the end game. The other, the other reason for it is, like we were talking about with the electrical system. For instance, we've had two or three outages, and we know this, but we have two or three outages in the St. Francis Woods Allen Lane area, right? Well, when we put that outage in and then Stewart then fix it and then they go back in and they say, okay, we corrected this outage and this is what we found. And this is the G P S coordinates where we found it. We start looking at those outages in a comprehensive way and a match, and we could say, okay. Stop of vegetation management, you're bringing the contractor in, we've had X amount of calls, these are all tree branches. We need to do a lot of work in this area cutting trees. We know that this part of the system is, we we see a lot of fuses out, so what's causing that? So you'd be able to see what's causing those comprehensive problems and look for patterns so that you can be more strategic in the work, in the. Investment into our infrastructure in the future.
And and on the on this complaint system, I'm working toward getting somebody to call the customer back. So taking accurate information or giving accurate information is important because I I really wanna assign somebody to call the customer back. But not all the times that my guys wanna talk to the home. Just just the way, just, you know, it's just the way it is, you know? You know, I would really like for them to knock on the door and say, hey, I fixed your water leak, you know, I'm out of here.
Am I getting a cup of tea out of it?
Anyway, that's that's the that's the goal of it, you know?
So now, we can go in and do it ourselves or we can give it to them, go in and do it for us every. A lot of times I, on my lunch break, or two, but doing the depth, it's something I need to put in, it needs to go.
If you wanna test ones, call me and say, hey, I'm gonna test one. Okay, we we received it, you know?
Okay, it's as easy as this. I push, I put that, for the link right here, I pull it up. Here's the complaint form. I can fill it out. It's like four blanks. Oh, I'm up. So if I'm on the street and I see a pot, I can put all the information in, it's in. Chris and them are gonna get it on the computer and it'll go. And then the one for the electrical is a little bit different. It's the uh, it's a different. Because it's already in the org G I S. So I'll push electrical right here, I'll pull it up. It's gonna pull up the G I S form. I'll put the information in and they're gonna get it. So instead of me keeping a list and calling Chris and saying, have all this. He's gonna get it every morning. They could go in, they can download what's in there, they can figure out the work and hand it off to the crew.
Yeah, we try to do more morning meetings with with different crews, you know, street bridges every morning.
But but we know that you guys work and so Ms. Lynn's there to assist and she's been trained on it. So if you just wanna write down a list of street lights and ask, send it to Ms. Lynn and email or give it to her and ask her to put them in. Cause they do need to be in a one by one, so that that can be a little time consuming if you have a list of them, but she can do that for you guys.
Yeah.
And and uh, like the tree on climbing, I I put that in there. You know, in street bridge, I check off that they did it. My goal is to either print your papers for you when everything's done and have it on you at your desk when you get here. Or tell you exactly how many we did in your district, however you want, you want, you know, so that's 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 the goal. It's gonna take me a little while to get there, but I'm I'm working on it with all the other stuff we got going on. Water plant, we we opened the hatch today. We've been having a lot of trouble with the with the lime silo and and the lime shakers. Uh, we opened the hatch today and um, it wasn't too nice what I found, so I might be coming to you to to clean out a silo. Um, we've been getting lime trucks and the last two, we had to send back part of the load, which is, which is not normal. Um, so there was a big crust slime. It's good lime still that that had formed a big dome on the inside. So we 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 broke up some of it, but we can't get it all. So we um, we we're working on on ordering some vibrators. That go on the side of the tank and redoing all the air to help keep the lime moving down where it's supposed to go. So we're working on that. Water quality is still gonna be great. We we doing all this. We can always cut lime out of a bag if we have to, which is what we do sometimes when the plant moves down.
It's a lot of alarms, a lot of manual labor of people.
Yeah.
And they're doing it, but.
Yes, it's just, we just need to get it right. It's just something that hadn't been taken care of that we're gonna take care of it, so.
When do we open the bids on the water plant? I know that's not. February sixth, okay. So we're getting close to the opening of the bids and we'll know more.
And 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 part of this wasn't in, it's not included in that in that job, so um. But we we we've we got some stuff we can take care of it with, so it's not not a big deal. We're gonna get it fixed. The citizens won't won't even miss a beat. So, any questions?
I just wanna make a comment that the complaint system was very easy for me to do and it's not where I.
Oh, yeah, I know that. I understand the simplicity of it, what I'm saying, but somebody that worked eight hours.
Yeah.
I can't just sit and, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, I'm always there to help if if you need. Uh, Rachel, we, they mixed up on some of your signs. I'm gonna get them tomorrow and the guys are gonna go and and swap them out. They they printed them back.
And I haven't gotten one yet because most of the complaints I get is police tourist stuff.
Hopefully you get them taken care of.
I wonder where they all coming from, probably from the budget in, which we're gonna talk about in a minute. All right, um, Parks and Recreation Director, uh, Bron Byron is not here. They did send a report. Um. On behalf of Quality Sports Authority, we hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and hope the new year goes. Video basketball season has started. Games are being played at Henry Gym this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Come out and watch the kids play. Baseball, fast pitch, softball registration is now open. Registration will continue until Friday, February twenty eighth. Registration is online at qualitiesportsauthority.org. If you need assistance with registration, please feel free to contact our offices. And it's numbers listed. I'll make sure that Christian gets this up. Um, also, Christian and Kristen, I see she's she's sitting right there. It would be good to share that um, video we did with Austin Belair about the baseball. You know how last year we did the baseball video? We'll do, maybe do a video in conjunction with the announcement online as a promotional thing. Any questions or comments for Parks and Rec, even though he's not here?
No, thank you, Kristen and Byron.
I know they had games all last weekend also. Okay, uh, mayor, couple, couple quick things. Um. Terry already, the councilwoman was already covered. Saturday, Jan- this Saturday, January eleventh, six to ten, Maggieland Place is the M L K Gala. Uh, tickets are sold out, but I'm sure it's gonna be a beautiful evening. The M L K March, January twentieth, nine AM stump service, nine thirty lineup. At Abbeville Electric for the Walk in the Ceremony. Um, Thursday, March thirteenth. Is the hundred and seventy fifth anniversary of the, uh, it's our hundred and seventy fifth birthday for the city of Abbeville. Um, so look for special features that Christian's gonna be doing. We're kinda having some discussions about can we do something special that week? Because it's the hundred and seventy fifth birthday. Uh, if you have any ideas, I'd love to hear them. But uh, just just we identified that and we're gonna try to do something special about it. And then also, listening to Chris's uh, talk, I wrote down, please keep your eyes open for leaks. I, we don't have a long term, freezing temperatures are not long enough to really cause hopefully too many problems, but it happens, right? So if you see something suspicious, get in touch with Chris and then put it in the system so that they can go out and inspect it because. Leaks pop up and the quicker we fix them, the better it is for our water system and water pressure and in case we do get a freeze in the future. So keep your eyes open. I'm gonna have to start walking again so I can look for water leaks. And that's all I have. Please chief, keep my party.
I thought I'd keep you real short. Uh, I put a sheet of paper on everyone's desk. Uh, just an update, this information that I'd like to pass on to you. Uh, this is breakdown of the calls for service for the Abbeville Police Department for years, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty four. Demonstrates that by being proactive with patrol and providing more personnel shifts, we have created a reduction in calls to service far as city. A higher law enforcement presence is deterring crime. So uh, it shows in front of you, two thousand nineteen, they had ninety three hundred and sixty three calls. Twenty, which is five years ago, ninety eight hundred and fifteen calls. Uh, twenty one, ninety two, ninety three, which dropped uh, five hundred and twenty two calls for the year. The next year in twenty two, dropped another five hundred and twenty one calls for the year. Twenty twenty three, we dropped five hundred and fifty nine calls and last year, which uh, I guess it was a good year. Cause we've dropped nine hundred and thirty seven calls for the year. That's a lot less calls for service. Means when officers get out there, people pay attention. Uh, it doesn't look like it's a whole bunch less calls during the year, but for the year, that that's a good sign. Uh, we want fewer calls where our people are happy with what's happening in town and they're getting along with each with each other even during the holidays. So uh, next thing is, uh, I have the part where I would like to explain the necessity of security guards for Stone Bridge Apartments in Live Oak Manor. Live Oak Manor still has their security guard. Stone Bridge has not hired a security guard as of yet. Uh, I'm showing you that calls for service to Live Oak Manor for twenty two is ninety eight. If you go down to Stone Bridge, it's two hundred and six, uh, two thousand twenty two. But two thousand twenty three, two hundred and ten at Live Oak Manor, uh, two hundred and thirty at Stone Bridge. Now, this year, uh, calls at Live Oak Manor went to two forty five and Stone Bridge went down to one eighty four. But it's still, there is a a big need for security guards and we've been writing citations and we're in the process of meeting with their attorney.
On Monday, the thirteenth, we have set up a meeting with their attorney. I don't know, is the owner is gonna be on that call or in person? And Chief Hardy, myself, councilwoman, if you would like to join us, that is your district, you're welcome to, but we have a meeting with owners of Stone Bridge. About the importance of them coming into compliance and trying to hope that.
And their local Abbeville attorney?
Oh, yes, yes, their actual attorney.
Okay, last thing I have on there for the update was farms taking off the streets of Abbeville by year. Twenty twenty, there was a hundred and twenty four. I think there was a campaign that they wanted to take every gun that they saw on the street, so. Twenty one went down to fifty nine, twenty two, sixty six, twenty three, fifty four, and last year we had seventy. So twenty-one went down to fifty-nine, twenty-two, sixty-six, twenty-three, fifty-four, and last year we had seventy-one. It's a lot of guns being illegal guns, that's not just taking somebody's gun because they're, they're walking with, this is somebody shot someone or shot up in the air and they were caught. Uh, just to give you an update, department real quick, last one minute, uh, I have one guy that just started an academy, Mr. Orion Skinner. And, uh, we have Mr. Goodrich is taking his psych test and the test to be put on patrol, and we have Mr. Darby tonight. Uh, we have started zone patrol, when I have three or more people on a shift, I have them zone patrol. You will see police officers more often, there'll be only one officer in there, and the only time they will leave that area is if we have a serious accident on the bypass or they have a serious call on another zone and lieutenant will monitor them and say, okay, you leave your zone now because we need you here. But when we have adequate people, I like the idea of zone patrol and you'll see the same guy controlling it all the time. That's the way we'll get the officers and the people in that neighborhood to notice. And we will also start our, uh, community policing and our, uh, neighborhood watch program too. So I am still asking for anyone that is interested in having a neighborhood watch meeting, please contact us. Uh, Charles Levine will be also walking around and talking to people, asking them, and also Aris will be trying to, uh, contact people and have them contact us to just get the neighborhood and the people to talk to each other. One thing that happens with neighborhood watch is people nowadays, they live a fast life, everybody goes to work, come home, relax. Nobody talks to their neighbor. When's the last time any of you in here drank coffee with your neighbor? Not too often anymore, used to, they do that every day, every day. Hey, I'm coming over, drink coffee, talk about what's going on in the neighborhood, who you saw on your cameras last night, you know, stuff like that. So it, I'm, that's all we're going to try to do is get people to know neighborhood watch. The best security you can have, even better than your security cameras, is your neighbor watching. And if you go on vacation, hey, I'm going on vacation for next week, my mail, you know, check my mail and take my, my newspaper off the ground so people don't notice that we're building a, and they know we're not here, okay? Best security, cheapest security, and then you do the same thing for them whenever they go on vacation. So just a couple of notes, thank you. We hired about six months ago. Mr. Gosbuck came to work after the surgeries, he is working right now.
Two things, Chief, budget in, uh, after that fire that happened on Acadian Drive, Brian met us out there, he did an inspection of the property, we noticed the trails, he followed them back through the woods to budget in. All the backside of budget in abandoned by the owners. It's been abandoned by the owners, they kicked in all the back doors, there's evidence of squatters otherwise, so please have you guys patrol that area. We are working on a plan on how to attack that problem. Um, and then the other thing is the littering citations, I talked to Heather on Monday.
That is for you alone, and we are sending certified letters to everyone, that way we know they have to sign them off, then that we, that way we can use it.
Or did you get back in touch with them with the letter, so the Heather sent the bird?
Yes, yes.
I didn't see a response, so I just want to make sure that...
It's very short, but it, it gives the information that's...
So that is the littering citations that we're capturing on video and we're, uh, with the help of the crime cameras we have and issuing littering citations to people so that we can try to curb littering in the community once we start enforcing it. It's been going on for about six months, this is the first of the tickets that are actually getting sent out. I've been asking the chiefs to try to get those moving, because I think once we start enforcing it, people know we have a way of catching them. We should see a, over time, a reduction in the amount of littering that's taking place on our streets, which I know the street crew and the...
Littering and parking handicaps you to high funds.
Yeah, that's what we should do, I mean, and that money stays with your local police department. So, you know, we, we really should be enforcing it, especially if you have it, we're ready to go. Yeah. I'll tease. Okay, and that's all I have, anything else for Chief, anybody?
I shared, anybody have any questions?
Okay, Far Chief Chief June Mear, I know we have some incidents this week, probably.
Yes, ma'am, just kind of give you all a little bit of a update. Uh, last Thursday morning, we had a structural fire on Acadian Drive and we lost a community member. It was a pretty big fire, when we got on scene, the whole structure was on, was engulfed. Uh, we knocked the fire down and we went inside and we did find an individual. Uh, this morning at four AM, we had one on Oak Street. Uh, it wasn't, the fire wasn't as bad as that one, but we also lost another commu, community member this morning. It's taken a little bit of a toll on the department, you know, it's, it's, it's been a couple of years since we had lost someone, so it's, it's kind of hard. We will be starting our program of putting out smoke detectors again next week. We have a list and we will be going around to each individual house, we'll call them and set up a time, and we will be installing for. Uh, hopefully after this, we're going to do thirty, thirty, thirty houses. After this, hopefully we can get some more from the state and do some more. Uh, we're trying to be proactive as much as possible and I'd just like to pass a P S A to the community, you know, uh, it's cold. You know, we need it, any space heaters, three feet around a space heater, please do not put anything. We know the community, we have an aging community, some people can't afford it, so they, they use their stoves or they use a gas heater. You just ask them to be very careful, because it doesn't take much, you know, and we've learned that in the last five days.
And, and Christian, I know, has been pushing some stuff, but maybe another thing about if you use any kind of electrical device for heat, because I think both of these instances, what they're finding is most likely caused by a hot plate in one, they think in a, a lamp that was being used to heat something on the other. Um, keep the area clear, uh, also a P S A to for people to reach out to their elderly and their neighbors to check the batteries and carbon monoxide as well as our, you know, the, uh, smoke detectors, because not always do the, their elderly neighbors or their, their family, elderly family, not even just the, some of the younger ones don't think to change the batteries and don't realize that they're out. So we'll do some pushing of that too, don't speak specifically of the incidents that happened, but we'll do some more pushing for it.
This afternoon, I also did an interview with Channel Fifteen, so we kind of did a little bit of a P S A
Good.
on there too, uh, State Fire Marshal had called about it. They were going to do the, the, the interview, but she decided that it was better for us to do it since we had the two incidents over here. So that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll, I'll help you write some some more. Okay, that's it, anything else before I go to council? Okay. I will start with Councilman Campbell to my left.
Thank you, Mayor, um, not much, just, you know, prayers, those that were injured in the incident in New Orleans. And, uh, if you've never heard of the word volat before, it, it's really coming up, coming up now, because that's what we have here, volat.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, we just, uh, everybody was killed and injured.
And I want to, I want to say this about the volats, because I know there's a lot of conversation on the public, on the, um, in the media, um, press, press meetings, right? About why weren't they there and how they malfunctioned. One of the things when we looked at the volats, we went with manual, where our guys go and put them in the can and lock them, because we didn't want something that was remote that could break, right? So, so ours are not hydraulic volats, they are manual volats that we go physically put in a can and lock off. So, you know, we don't have that mechanical, we don't, we don't have the potential for the mechanical failure like those did. So that's the, you know, I wanted to say that, because, yeah, like you said, nobody knew what they were until we put them up, but now unfortunately, everybody knows what they are, right?
I asked when we started to doing the work down, uh, whether they're going to be permanent bar.
Right.
Well, that's also the reason why we, we block off so much down here when we have an activity, so nobody can get to the...
Yeah.
Right, so, uh, and I wanted to say this, uh, I've got together with you for the M L K march. Next step is to get, me and the chief to get together on how we're going to block off everything so nobody can get to the crowd, they can have a good time and they can do what they got to do, so...
Council, Councilor Bruce Art, uh, Councilman Bruce Art.
Uh, we have not met since December, I want to wish each of you and your families the best year possible in two thousand twenty-five. And, uh, the year is going to be what we make it, so please have a good, healthy, prosperity year.
Councilperson, if you're technical, um, just happy to hear everyone. Councilor Howard. In New Jersey. Minutes a spare.